Good evening, everybody. It's our agenda meeting of the Public City Council. People first. Ordinance 502, ordinance on second reading. Ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank. Ordinances for discussion on first reading. 501, bond ordinance providing for the 2015 general capital improvement program by and in the city of New Brunswick, in the county of Middlesex, St. Louis, Jersey, appropriating $6,671,902, therefore en authorizing of debt in the amount of $6,437, requiring a down payment of $324,902. 502, bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the sewer system by and in the city of New Brunswick, in the county of Middlesex, St. Louis, Jersey, appropriating $2,650,000, therefore en authorizing the issuance of $2,650,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. 503, bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements for the water system by and in the city of New Brunswick, in the county of Middlesex, St. Louis, Jersey, appropriating $968,000, therefore en authorizing the issuance of $921,000, bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof, requiring a down payment of $48,000. 504, in ordinance to amend supplement to revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Traffic Control Regulations, loading zones, add a loading zone on Eastern Avenue. Resolutions. 501, approve agenda minutes. 502, approve payroll. 503, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificate. 504, approve request for use of city property enclosure of streets requested by the Veterans Alliance of Broward and Valley Incorporated, location, Miami Square Park and Broward Streets, for Royal Day Parade Open Ceremony, Monday, May 25, 2015, time is 10:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., street closure, Livingston Avenue, Waltham Street, George Street, Albany Street, Warrick Avenue, Woodbridge Avenue. 505, approve request for street closing, requested by Nikhil Pendy, location, New Street, between George Street and Livingston Avenue, and Livingston Avenue between New and George Street, for Barat, a religious ceremony for a wedding with a procession with a horse flight by a drummer. Date, Saturday, July 4, 2015, time, 9:30 a.m. to 10:40 a.m., police extra duty. 506, approve request for street closing, requested by Rutgers Student Life, location, College Avenue between Bartlett and Senior Streets, for annual hot dog day for Rutgers students and various activities, zip line. The date is Wednesday, April 22, 2015, and range date is Thursday, April 23, 2015. Time is 11 a.m. to 7 p.m., police extra duty. 507, approve request for street closing, requested by Rutgers Student Life, location, College Avenue between Bartlett and Senior Streets, 8th Annual Homecoming Charity Bed Race, Thursday, September 24, 2015, time, 7 p.m. to 11:30 p.m., police extra duty. 508, approve request for street closing, requested by Rutgers University Student Life, location, College Avenue between Senior Streets and Bishop Place, for Rutgers University Involvement Fair, date is Monday, September 7, 2015, and range date is Friday, September 11, 2015, time is 8 a.m. to 8 p.m., police extra duty. 509, approve request for street closing, requested by New Brunswick Park Authority, location is Livingston Avenue between George and New Streets, for St. Peters University Hospital Gala at the Eldridge Hotel, Saturday, April 25, 2015, 5:30 to 12 a.m., police extra 510, approve request for use of city property, requested by ZT Enterprises LLC, location, Blue Hill Park, Trac and Pavilion, for a 5K run walk, Saturday, May 2nd, 2015, time, 9 a.m. to 1 p.m. 511, approve request for use of city property and sidewalk use, requested by the Salvation Army, sidewalks at Handy Street to French Street to War Memorial Park for open air gatherings on Easter Sunday morning, followed by breakfast back at the Salvation Army. The date is Sunday, April 5, 2015, times 8 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. 512, authorize tax collecting to transfer credits on several tax and utility accounts. 513, approve amendment of resolution R.061474, authorize the use of the home program income account to pay proportion of the previously appropriated funds from the Nine Bear Street project to DCW Madeline Housing Partners LLC for 10 affordable specialties housing units, location is Nine Bear Street, not to exceed 604-385. 514, approve pointer of council, Benedict Lomond, for representation of Police Director Andy Cudo, in the matter of Leroy R. Chambers versus Middlesex County, not to exceed $5,000. 515, approve reimbursement temporary appropriations for 2015. 516, authorize shared services agreement with New Brunswick Board of Education, for reimbursement for the social safety program for 2015-2016 school year, the amount is $652,679. 517, authorize shared service agreement with New Brunswick Board of Education for reimbursement for the after-school programs and sister cities programs for the 2015-2016 school year, the amount is $1,044,670. 518, authorize shared service agreement with New Brunswick Board of Education for reimbursement for use of various city parks, garbage and trash bill, maintenance costs for the 2015-2016 school year, the amount is $1,398,406. 519, authorize shared service agreement with New Brunswick Board of Education for memorial stadium blitzer improvements, the amount is $1,005,275,520, authorize purchase by the Police Department of State Contract A, 81348, from Lanigan Associates Incorporated, for 27 bulletproof vests for the Police Department, not to exceed $19,09810. 521, approve amendment of resolution R.051349, the reason is to pay final invoices for 2014 in the amount of $12,775, with Longbow Electrical and Mechanical Incorporated, for sanitary sewer pump station maintenance, not to exceed $12,775. 522, approve award contract for furniture delivery trees for spring tree planting program for the park department, with Schitt's Nursery Incorporated, items A, B, C, I, and L, not to exceed $7,960, with Marbado Nursery Corporation, items D, E, F, G, and J, not to exceed $6,586, with Bissett Nursery Corporation, items H and K, not to exceed $8,790, specification number 430-15P. 523, approve authorization to advertise for furniture deliverer 1, 2015, 8 passenger vehicle wheelchair lift, and 2 wheelchair stations for dial line, specification number 43-15P. 524, approve payment for emergency procurement of apartment public worth for immediate delivery of 50 tons of sand salt mix, KLK Trucking Company Incorporated, not to exceed $3,64950, purpose order number D78247. 525, approve office practice raffle, merchandise at St. John the Baptist Church, 29th and Beale Street, Parish of Invisitation Incorporated, dated 21, 2015. 526, approve award contract with Allied Oil Company LLC, first deliverer of diesel fuel, 12-month period commencing April 2, 2015, and ending April 1, 2016, specification number 428-15P, not to exceed $205,000. 527, authorize application, acceptance and execution of grant agreements for 2015, New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety, for 2015, clicker ticket, seatbelt campaign enforcement grant, the amount is $4,000. 528, approve share services agreement with Middlesex County Improvement Authority, for collection of designated recyclable materials, the term is 3 years, and 1 year renewal option. 529, approve resolution to authorize 2015 temporary capital budget. 530, approve amendment of resolution R.031532, reason and additional days due to inclement weather, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance, requested by 75 Avenue LLC, the reason complete work at Rutgers Hill, student center, dates April 4, 11, 18, 25, May 2, 9, 16, 23, height 30, 215, time 7 a.m. to 6 p.m. 531, approve award contract with Commercial Construction Management Service LLC, for DCW Building Number 2, roof repairs replacement, specification number 875-15, not to exceed $56,14964. 532, approve award contract with George Pusmus Paintings LLC, for cornice replacement to the fire museum at Sedan Street and Remsen Avenue, specification number 85914, not to exceed $52,975. 533, approve award contract with USA Architects, bark treatment service for masonry repairs and roof replacement at City Hall, specification number 874-14FP-R, note $52,969. 534, approve award contract with Absolute Fiber Protection Company, for fire engine pump repair service, 12-month period commencing April 2, 2015, and ending April 1, 2016, specification number 427-15P, not to exceed $20,000. 535, approve payment for emergency procurement division of animal control for cattle services through the period of January 1, 2015, to March 18, 2015, with Blumwick Candles Incorporated, not to exceed $2,760, purpose order number D78742. 536, approve payment for emergency procurement of reward utilities, repairable water service line at 161 New Street for main concourse, with NACI Contractors Incorporated, not to[619.22][619.22][S01.82][S01] exceed $8,00513, purpose order D77845. 537, approve lease of copy machine for law department, GD Capital Information Tech Solutions doing business as Rico USA, for one Rico model 6002SP copy machine, not to exceed $31571 per month, commencing May 1, 2015, end behavior 30, 2019, 48-month contract, state contract A, 82709/M0053, New Jersey cost per copy. 538, approve relaxation of the city noise ordinance, requested by Sky High Records and Equipment, voice AC equipment at 106 Albany Streets, the date is Saturday, April 11, 2015, open date Saturday, April 13, 25, 2015, time is 7 a.m. to 12 p.m. 539, approve amendment of resolution R.031557, reason change tied to 12 p.m. to 4 p.m., approve request for use of city property, requested by Phi Gamma Delta, the location is Blue Hill Park, Pavilion and Lawn for Field Day Event to benefit the USO, date is Friday, April 17, 2015, time is 12 to 4 p.m. 540, resolution to be graduating the New Brunswick Jazz Project on the occasion of its 5th anniversary. 541, resolution authorizing the establishment of maximum salaries for 2014. Sit.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Present.
Council President Egan?
Here. Please give advice if the ordinance requirements of the Old Public Meetings Act have been complied with and satisfied without an annual notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, has been placed out of appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, namely the Holland Business Tribune, in Stanford, Kentucky.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a little over a solid for our men and women serving our armed forces, and for all our men and women in armed forces who have lost their lives in battle. Thank you. We have minutes from March 4, 2015. Do I have any quick minutes?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes.
Mr. Council President, before we go on to ordinances on second reading under the public hearings, I just want to make an announcement. I know that the council was advised and the city issued a press release regarding the settlement of the case of New Jersey Coalition and homelessness in John Fleming versus the city of New Brunswick. I just want to reiterate for the council that the city has agreed that it will amend or repeal ordinances 5.32 and 9.04.05086 regarding the solicitation of or begging for food or money. We feel there are legitimate concerns regarding the constitutionality of the ordinances. Last year, the city did enforce the ordinances, but the city will no longer enforce or prosecute the ordinances. In the future, the council will seek proposed amendments to those ordinances for the council's consideration. I just want to report.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon, appreciate that. We have ordinance on second reading, 502, in ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank. Would anybody left in the public like to comment on this particular ordinance this evening, this particular ordinance? Step right up, sir.
Good evening, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick. I just wanted to ask about what purpose is this ordinance? Is it borrowing money?
Either or, no, it's not borrowing money. It allows this governing body to increase the budget over last year's appropriations by 3.5%. Whatever this year's budget doesn't eat into that 3.5%, you can use that as a future bank for future budget years.
So which, what cap is that?
The spending cap.
Spending cap, that's not the percent cap of increase?
It's not the tax levy cap.
Tax levy cap, that's been around, that's been around a long time? That's not new?
This is not new. In fact, we've taken this action every year for, seems like 10 years now.
Anybody else on the ordinance? Seeing nobody?
The ordinance, second.
Go call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes, we have ordinances for discussion on first reading, 501, bond ordinance providing for 2015 general capital improvement programs by and in the city of New Brunswick, in the county of Middlesex, St. Louis, Jersey, appropriating $6,761,902, therefore en authorizing of debt in the amount of $6,437, and requiring a down payment of $324,902.
Move the ordinance setting down April 15 for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 502, bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the sewer system by and in the city of New Brunswick, in the county of Middlesex, St. Louis, Jersey, appropriating $2,650,000, therefore en authorizing the issuance of $2,650,000 bonds and notes to finance the cost thereof.
I move the ordinance setting down April 15 for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 503, bond ordinance providing for various capital improvements for the water system by and in the city of New Brunswick, in the county of Middlesex, St. Louis, Jersey, appropriating $968,000, therefore en authorizing the issuance of $921,000, bonds and notes, finance the cost thereof, requiring a down payment of $48,000.
Move the ordinance setting down April 15 for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. 504, in ordinance to amend and supplement to revised general orders of the city of New Brunswick, Chapter 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Traffic Control Regulations, loading zones, add a loading zone on Eastern Avenue.
Move the ordinance setting down April 15 for public hearing, same date to be advertised.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We have resolutions, we have resolutions 501, and resolution 541. Would anybody from the public like to comment on any of the resolutions here this evening? Step right up.
Good evening, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick. For getting, there's no more agendas available, so I just have to force through this. Yes, so 014-513. I just wanted to say, I think this is a really great thing, I'm glad the council's doing it. The 513, it's Dean as well, I think that's phenomenal. The next one, I'd like to ask about the court case against the Police Director. Can you tell me what the nature of the case is, what are the accusations?
Mr. Shannon, I could, I could address that. This particular lawsuit that was filed by Mr. Chambers actually seeks damages for property damage, which allegedly results from the forfeiture of Mr. Chambers's Nissan as a result of some type of criminal activity. Complaints vague in that regard, but Mr. Chambers, let's sue the county of Middlesex, the prosecutor's office, the police department, and individuals, and that's the nature of this particular claim. It's a property damage claim for his loss of his vehicle.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon.
Thank you. Can you tell me, do you know Mr. Chambers was found guilty of any crimes?
I don't know anything about that.
You don't have that information?
The next one I'd like to ask about is 528. So I understand that the city is signing up with the county for recycling services, and I just want to understand that now that it is single-stream recycling, that is that actually, that's taken effect already, correct?
Today, I believe today is the first year.
Okay, great, so that means that in my recycling can, I can just include paper along with the bottles and cans now?
Yes, that's correct. Mr. Cradville?
Yes, that's correct. With single-stream recycling, you can mix your bottles, cans, paper, and cardboard. In your recycling bucket, not in a bag, but in a bucket.
And regarding the cardboard, is it only corrugated cardboard or other types of cardboard?
It's always been mixed paper, including cereal boxes, chipboard, and items like that, that would go right into your bucket. Any small pieces of cardboard that would fit into a recycling bucket, you can place in there. If a large amount of cardboard, you would ask you to flatten and tie it to larger than 4 feet by 4 feet.
Where would somebody, if somebody don't have a bucket, would need a bucket?
They can get it at Public Works. If you have an old city or county issued recycling bucket that's broken, you can bring your old bucket back to Public Works, and we will exchange it with a brand new one for free. If you purchased a home within the last year and did not get your new bucket, you can put it in your D and get buckets for free for each unit. Otherwise, if you need additional containers or replace the containers, you can purchase them at our cost, which is $10.05 for the round container, and $9.99 for the square of the rectangular container with a lid. I'm going to take cash and checks, and we'll write your receipt and give you your buckets for then and now.
Thank you very much. Glad to hear we're single-stream recycling now. The next one I wanted to ask about is 533. What exactly is going to be done to the, is the old firehouse? Or I'm sorry, that's the City Hall. What exactly is going to be done to City Hall?
We are asking USA Architects to address a, or prepare construction drawings and bid able documents on all of our problems above this roof line, which we've talked about over the years. We have a lot of masonry work that needs to be repaired. The perimeter of this building has these parapet walls with limestone caps that are leaking, causing, we believe, the water intrusion into this room. We are retaining their services to draw up the plans, put the bid documents together so that we can get those repairs made, at least started this summer.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville.
Thank you, and I'm not sure what number it is, but also does this as an expenditure for some type of repairs to the old firehouse, the Union Square Community Center?
Yes.
What's going to be done there?
If you can picture the current 81 Remson Avenue, there's a green piece of ornamental aluminum that runs around the perimeter of the building, we're calling it the cornice. During our renovation of the building, we found it to be in worse condition than we thought it was going to be in. It is now the recommendation of our engineering department and the architects on the job to replace the cornice work altogether, so that is the manner that you see of all items before this.
Thank you, and just on that, on that same topic, related question, what is the timeline for the Firehouse Museum on the second floor of that building to open?
I don't know the answer to that. The interior fit out is still being developed between the fire department and architectural firm, I don't have the answer to that.
Just a couple more. Can somebody speak to what the situation is with the Candles now in New Brunswick? Do we have a new contractor?
We, by your action last meeting, we entered into a new agreement with Blue McCandles Company. This was the emergency period where we didn't really have a contract, a long-term contract with them, and this is just to pay the expenses between January 1 and March 18.
Yes, we are, Blue McCandles is our new cattle contract.
Right, okay, and can you tell me the details of the new agreement? How many years is it, what are the costs?
My recollection, it's a 1-year contract, and I think we appropriated not to exceed $16,000, if I'm not mistaken. We're not doing business with Highland Park this year. We had previously provided animal control services to that community, they chose not to renew with us this year, I think they're doing business with Edison, so we will be only sending New Brunswick animals as required to Blue McCandles.
Thank you, and a couple more. The next one is an emergency contract for water utility repairs. Can you tell me, how does it get decided what companies you go to for these types of things when it's an emergency? I see it's NAFI this time. Why were they chosen?
In this case, NAFI was doing, responding to a homeowner's request for their services. When our forces got there and inspected the job, we found that it was not the responsibility of the homeowner, but it was more of a utility requirement. In this case, we allowed NAFI to complete the repair and agreed to reimburse them, but we have an annual contract with another firm out of South River, BMW, who is, in almost all cases, called in on the real deep excavations that are required.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville.
Thank you kindly. And I do want to just say I very much support 540 commending the Jazz Project on their work, because it's a great organization, and support that. And then the last one is 541. Can somebody just explain this? I know it was a last-minute addition, what is the purpose of it? I don't quite understand what it does.
Yes. The chief financial officer reported to the pension system oil management increases from 2014. They found the CFO's certification to be insufficient for some reason. We then had the mayor provide a certification of what those increases were. The pension department found that certification to be insufficient. They require a resolution of the governing body, which simply recognizes the salary increases you gave to management in 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville.
So, forgive me, what's the problem with the DPB? Why are they questioning certifications? Is this a new development, or does this happen every year?
Mr. Cradville, has it happened before?
Not to my knowledge.
I mean, does it have anything to do with the comptroller's, you know, accusations that we had people improperly enrolled getting pensions, who didn't deserve them?
I have not heard that.
No, we have not heard that.
I do find it curious that they don't take the certification of CFO for what the salary, salaries earned in 2014 for management employees. I find it very curious that they don't find a certification from a professional like the CFO as acceptable, nor did they find a certification from the mayor, the chief executive officer, acceptable. But nonetheless, well, they're the only game in town, and we will provide them with the documents they've asked for.
So this is what they asked for, just adopted by the governing body?
Yes.
And can I just ask, did they, did they give any reason for why they weren't accepting the certifications?
They simply asked for a resolution of the governing body, and...
No reason, they just wanted it to be done this way.
Okay, that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Anybody else on the resolutions this evening? Resolutions only, please. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, good evening. My name is Nancy Scalzone, I live in Warrick and Gardens, and I'm here to address the approval of payment for emergency procurement to Blue McCandles. I'm here tonight to ask the council members to investigate the possibility of joining other municipalities and establishing a regional ambulance shelter in light of the recent closing of the Helmut Regional Ambulance Shelter. I've been a staunch supporter of the reopening of this shelter. Nikki Dawson, who was the interim director, presented an excellent business Nikki Dawson, who was the interim director, presented an excellent business reopening plan. However, it looks like the reopening is not going to happen because of the politics that plague Helmetta and the circus that surrounds a mayor who likes to wield power. I've witnessed the results of its poor management and greed that resulted from its initial opening. I was in the shelter the night of the NJSPCA raid to care for the animals found to be in very poor condition. I fed cats that had not been fed in days. I cleaned filthy cages. I saw kittens hours from death and cats with unattended injuries and illnesses. This was never meant to be a shelter. It was open with the intent of contracting as many municipalities as possible to create a monopoly animal-controlled business. Hundreds of animals, hundreds of domestic animals died at the hands of Michael Chalise and two municipal employees she taught euthanasia to. And now Mr. Andrew Carey, our prosecutor, has dismissed the felony animal cruelty charges that would have caused a possible conflict of interest within his department as Mrs. Chalise listed his assistant prosecutor as a personal reference on her employment application. I've written the prosecutor and I've also asked the state attorney general's office to call for an investigation into the dismissal. I now see that we've contracted Blooming's Kennels. That's very upsetting to a lot of us in rescue. I just want you to know that. Blooming's Kennels is privately-run kennel with a very high kill rate. It's not really a shelter. Animals that go in there are not advocated for adoption. Animal control within Middlesex County is now in limbo. And the fact that they have a very high kill rate at Blooming's, this means that this costs the city money because they kill more than they save. As we advance into the future, we are moving backwards in the care of our animals. Increase in the human population needs more pets. It also increases the probability of abandonment and improper care regarding these pets. Most of the dogs in shelters are pit bull mixes and are often euthanized just because the people that have them don't have the means to properly care for them. I am the director of TNR with Karma Cat and Zen Dog Rescue Society. We here tonight are very aware of the continued overpopulation of feral and stray cats. What is now the most popular home pet is also the most left behind and abandoned. I'm offering this council an opportunity to meet with me and others involved in this very important aspect of rescue to implement trap neuter and return in New Brunswick. My organization and Scarlet Paw's have already done this in various sections of the city. The need for organizing our efforts is imperative to control the cat population. By the way, these TNR cats are also vaccinated for common feline disease and rabies. Trap neuter return is rapidly becoming the accepted humane method of controlling and exploding cat population across the country in larger cities. Implementing TNR also, most importantly, saves taxpayers' money. And it's also possible to receive grant money to work with accepted cities in achieving its goals. I urge you to accept my offer with regards to TNR in the city of New Brunswick. We are the center of Middlesex County. We are a great city. Let us be the leader in bringing this county into the 21st century when it comes to the care and successful sheltering of our lost and forgotten companion animals. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Anybody else on resolutions? Ma'am? Ma'am, excuse me?
Yes?
Could you give us your name and number so I can have somebody contact you from the city? Mr. Locken right there?
Yes.
He's right behind you.
I'd be happy to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions?
Yes, sir. My name is Walter Harris, community advocate, community activist. I would like to present to the city council basically the homeless situation. More so, this is a 40-bed shelter at Cafeteries. And in the 40-bed shelter, there's no immediate rapid housing program available to the homeless community. When we did the...
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt you.
Yeah.
We're working on the resolutions right now.
On the agenda, yeah?
Yeah, the resolution part.
Yeah.
You have a specific resolution you're speaking about?
According to the agenda.
According to the resolutions?
Of this document here?
Yes.
No, so if Dan, I would be able to speak?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'll get right back to you, sir. Stay right there. You don't have to sit back. Anybody else on the resolutions?
Move to resolutions.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council vice president Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlati?
Aye.
Council president Egan?
Yes. Now move to the public portion of the meeting, sir.
My name is Walter Harris, community activist, community advocate. I'm here as a liaison between the homeless community and the city. I've worked extensively in case management on rapid housing threatened for Cafeteries, TCS, and community care services. They went to Jennifer Velez at Human Services and they found that the rapid housing, every time we house a homeless individual, we save over $10,000. More so, the 40-bed shelter at Cafeteries is only housing 40 people. When they had to code to Elijah Promis, Jim Zulo, they found that every night there was 40 people. Chasing Jersey came out, Rutgers students came out in droves. People were coming to the train station donating clergy, et cetera, et cetera. And you can see every night, actually, when they closed the fence, there's a number of at least 20 people just sleeping in a square. More so, I'm not sure if there's zoning laws next to Walgreens or other open spaces, but there's two avenues. I have a complete outline to address this social need. More so, I'm asking that, I have an active petition moving on Rutgers and hopefully by the 15th, I will have at least 500 signatures from voters, as well as, 500 to 1,000 signatures from voters, as well as the Rutgers students. So I'm asking that you please look into this issue if you need more information. I can steer you to some coming home representatives, myself, some of Rutgers organizations called Rutgers United Supporting Homeless, Food for Thought, Food for Thought, which feeds the homeless every second Saturday by Haram Square. And that's not even counting the undocumented population. So, and as if you had an emergency shelter, what would happen? You can, you would find a pour-over, like, you get, like, for instance, Trenton, as an example. At 4 o'clock, the homeless come and if they get there by 4 o'clock, they have a bed. Whoever's outside of that, the case management cafeteria will come and do a quick, like, review and see, like, an assessment to see if they're eligible. If they're not eligible, they at least maybe call 211, put them up at a hotel motel for the night, and then start again with their case management to try to find them rapid housing, with the goal of moving towards self-sufficiency, so...
Have you spoke with anybody in the city at all? You met with anybody?
Briefly, briefly. Just Human Services, Bridget Kennedy at Coming Home, as well as Ruth Cruz. And I'm in the county, no, I reached out to Cory Booker and I've made this, I addressed this also to Janet Ford at the congressman's office as well. But they said there's no funding.
I know that the county has an effort going on at Coalition of Homeless, the Coming Home. They have been trying to address the homeless situation in the city. And locally, Elijah Promis is the one that usually deals with it and manages also the count of the homeless and so forth. It's a difficult one.
Yes.
Because there is a need, and that's why they have rotated with Cold Blue, not just Elijah Promis, but other churches also open their doors to let the homeless stay because there's hardly any place for them to sleep, especially in the night. So it is an issue, a challenge that we have. But I know that there is the county and the city are working together to try to see, address what would be the best solution to handle this.
They addressed that solution, and the solution they found was the Rapid Housing and the Housing Person Initiative. I was extensively trained from Trenton, myself, to do that. And when trying to implement that or trying to find services to have that, they have funding, for instance, Cafeteries have the Rapid Housing funding. So many people called that there's still a pour-over. More so, Cafeteries, they're basically looking for welfare, SSI, felons coming home. And then the general homeless community is seeing pour-over. So if you just look at the numbers at the Cold Blue during the winter months, like, you're going to have your parks poured over now in the summertime with homeless individuals trying to sleep along the riverbanks. And then I also work with FEMA situation, when in 2009, they had an emergency shelter at Elijah Promis. And they said it was a FEMA issue. And Michael Trina, Linda J, all the people from all the agencies were trying to address it. And we helped a lot of people, even veterans as well. So I've been doing some outreach in the field just because I know certain ways of how to get people rehoused by doing, like, quick assessments and basically talking to people, but they don't know them, progressively interviewing them. But more so, like I said, I have this written out. I can bring you other people to help me. My brother-in-law, who worked for Shamrock Construction, the company that built the Barnes &amp; Noble building behind the train station. So if there is a plot of land, a zone, or something of that nature, this can easily be addressed and I think we can even use the students to create a council to help and assess this problem. But please, I'm asking, welcome for...
Well, my advice is to go to the mayor's office and call the mayor's office and send a phone number to the mayor and talk to him and maybe he can lead you or help you in that direction.
And who would be the contact for that?
You can call Kevin Jones in the mayor's office. 745-500-4. 5004.
5004.
Somebody will give you a number, just in the meantime, get it to you.
No, I'm going to, Jones Jr.
Okay.
All right.
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address the council this evening, public comment?
What is happening?
Yes?
My name is Cristina Paredes.
My name is Cristina Paredes.
We're here to represent our community. Muchas gracias. Please listen to us.
We come to represent the community. Thank you for having us.
We're here to deliver a petition.
We're coming to hand over some petitions.
And this is an example of a brief request for our community, for our workers, to have days of illness paid.
And this is a prescription for giving the workers here in New Brunswick paid sick days.
We're looking forward to speaking with you more and talking with you
about how this could pass in New Brunswick, paid sick days can pass in New Brunswick.
We invite you to meet with us, to talk to us further, work with us, to see how this could become a law here in New Brunswick. And we're here to sign our signature for our community to support this petition.
And we invite you to meet with us, to talk to us further, work with us, to see how this could become a law here in New Brunswick.
And we're here to sign our signature for our community to support this petition. So, we're here.
And so now we're going to hand over the signatures for the petition that we have. And we are handing over 1,000 signatures. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else I could address the council this evening? Anyone else? Step right up, sir.
My name is Edison Kito. I'm a Rutgers University student and I'm here to support the petition. I was an employee at one of the higher-end establishments here in New Brunswick. And as all college students, especially when you live off campus, they have to kind of pick up jobs to make ends meet. And I noticed that a lot of employees, other than myself, didn't get these sick days and it was stressful for them because the only way to get out would be if somebody didn't cover your hours, you would have to go into work no matter if you were sick or not. And especially for us students, you have exams the next day. We need somebody to cover for us. And a lot of times we didn't. And unfortunately for my situation, I was forced to leave this establishment just because my grades weren't too good and I had to make the decision whether to work or keep my grades up. And that's pretty much it for me.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Nirsha Ravila. I live on Calle Ciudad Street in New Brunswick.
Good evening. My name is Nirsha Ravila. I live on Sedan Street in New Brunswick. I'm here representing the Esperanza Project, a group of residents dedicated to the improvement of our community such as in safety, cleanup, and transportation. We're supported by the organization in Brunswick Tomorrow. And we support the Paid Sick Days campaign together with other organizations, Union Square and New Labor. We had the opportunity to meet with Rebecca Escobar last week and present our support for this campaign. And the ordinance would be very important for me and my family because my husband, he works through a New Brunswick temp agency and he has to go to work whether he's well or whether he's sick. Because if he doesn't, he's at risk of losing his job. For example, even the day when I, the birth of our daughter, when I was in the hospital, my husband couldn't be there with me because he had to go to work. He had no option. If he wouldn't have gone that day to be with me in the hospital, they wouldn't, the temp agency wouldn't have sent him to work the next day. Another important reason for me is that I'm suffering from an illness and I have to go to treatment once a week. And because he doesn't have sick days, my husband can never accompany me to the visits, to the appointments, which I would love for me to be able to do. And the ordinance says that would be written, would include, would cover workers who work with the New Brunswick temp agencies, even if they're sent to work outside of the city? According to a survey that we did in the neighborhood last year, 74% Latino families have a family member who has worked with the temporary employment agency. All our members are supportive of this post-ordinance, even those who aren't going to benefit directly? Because it's for the common good, welfare, and health of all the community. And we ask and hope that in Brunswick would follow the example of other cities in New Jersey. And we ask for the opportunity to meet with the council members to come to an agreement about this ordinance. Thank you, and we hope for your support.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Irene Lopez. I live in the city of New Brunswick. And also I am here because when I was working... And sick days we didn't have, and in fact, they threatened me that if I was out, I shouldn't come back the next day.
That's what they said, that if you were sick, you didn't have to fulfill your obligations, and that's bad.
Because it's hard when you're sick, that you can't meet your obligations, and therefore it's bad.
Yeah, I was working in a Mexican restaurant here in New Brunswick. And I have kids, and therefore it's hard, given the employment situation. Yeah, I'm sick, I'm sick, I'm sick, and I'm working, but I would like to support this.
What's the answer?
To support this, because, well, it's bad, because I'm sick, and I'm working.
And I'm sick right now, but I think it's important that you guys support this ordinance, because it's bad when someone's sick and they're still working. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning.
Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, I want to start by echoing everything I just heard. I think the council needs to do the right thing and have the meeting with these folks and discuss this with them, and hopefully at your next meeting, you'll have this on your agenda as an ordinance, or perhaps an item for discussion, fail to that. I think it's a very popular and progressive idea that you should all support. I also want to apologize for something I said at the last council meeting that may not have been completely accurate, might have been a little misleading, I wasn't clear on the facts about what the laws are regarding environmental commissions, and Jennifer Bradshaw set me straight and pointed out that the state law does say that the mayor should pick the president of the environmental commission. So I stand corrected, and I apologize for that. I want to ask, what the heck is going on at Water Utility?
What is going on at Water Utility? Can you be a little more specific?
The director is demoted. What can you tell me about that?
Yes, Mr. Shammy, who's going to speak.
Mr. Council President, we released a statement, a public statement regarding the reassignment of the Water Utility Director to a position of Superintendent of the Water Treatment Plant. We stated in that particular release the facts that we could state, it's a personnel matter, we can't discuss personnel matters, as the council knows, in public. An employee has certain privacy rights. So what we released is what we can release, and I would advise the council that we can't have a discussion regarding the matter in further than what was released by the city.
Thank you, Mr. Shammy.
Is the council confident that we'll be able to end the relationship with American Water when the contract is up later this year?
Are we confident that we're gonna end, that's what we've been, I believe, Mr. Lachlan spoke about that last meeting, right?
I'm asking the council if you're confident that's gonna happen.
I have no comment, I mean, I'm not sure what you mean by that question. Am I confident that we're gonna be, I can't answer that question. That's the goal that I hope to get to. That's the goal that I hope to get to.
Okay, so what's the status report? How are we doing on that goal?
I don't have a status report.
Can you have one for the next meeting, please? I think this is, the council stated this is a goal, this is an important goal, and now we have a setback.
We'll have a little more status report at the next meeting for you.
Thank you, I think, hopefully we're able to do that, because that would be a shame if the city wasn't able to reach that goal, because we weren't focused on it. I want to ask about Senator Benedez was indicted earlier today. Do any of you have any thoughts on that? Is it cause for concern, are you troubled at all by the development?
Well, I certainly, you know, I really can't really comment on something I really don't know much about. So I just saw, I heard it on the news when I was driving here today, so I really don't know any particulars. You know, it's a matter for the courts to decide now. I mean, he was indicted, I understand, on several counts, and it will find its way into court of law. And it's a shame that it's always happening here in New Jersey, you know, I will say that publicly, that stuff comes out, but that's all I can say about it at this time.
Okay, did any of the council members want to speak?
Would you like to speak about that?
In favor or against?
Would you like to answer, Mr. Cradville?
As usual, I just go with the due process.
Thank you. I need to follow up on some concerning statements at the last council meeting that were made by Captain Miller.
By Captain, no, Captain Miller, okay.
Yes, Captain Miller wrongly cited the Open Public Records Law. What he said about the Open Public Records Law is that they are not required, or that, he said, "They are not allowed to create a new document to fulfill an Oprah request." And I would like to ask you, Mr. Council President, could you please ask your business administrator if he has ever created a document to fulfill an Oprah request for me?
Mr. Lachlan?
I have.
He has.
Was Mr. Lachlan breaking the overlaw when he did that?
I hope not. Yes, Mr. Shammy?
If I can, and I understand where Mr. Cradville's coming from, and I certainly will tell you that I think Mr. Lachlan has done that. When someone asks for a specific document or record under Oprah, it's an obligation of the public entity to find that particular document, or one that closely resembles what has been requested. And unfortunately, sometimes information is requested that we have in a particular medium, that we have to create into another medium so that we could give it to a requester like Mr. Cradville. And I think what Mr. Lachlan has referred to, and what he has done, is obtained information by compiling a list, maybe off a computer database, to provide the response. What Captain Miller was referring to at the last meeting was that the most recent document that they have is the one they supplied. They didn't go back and verify the information, update the information. While perhaps it can be argued that it should be done, as Mr. Cradville did, it wasn't done. And only, the overlaw only requires that we produce a document that most closely resembles that which is requested. So I don't think Captain Miller was wrong, and in that regard, I don't think Mr. Cradville was wrong when he said that Mr. Lachlan has created documents, but I think we're talking apples and oranges here, and I just wanted to explain that. I think Mr. Cradville will agree with me to some degree.
I'm glad you don't think I did anything wrong. What I will say is that Captain Miller incorrectly cited the law. What he said was that, "They are not allowed to create a new document." And his other statements in that same day that he had in fact updated the document totally destroyed that credibility of that first statement, because he in fact did create a new document, it had inaccuracies in it. And I was simply politely privately tried to raise that to the department, and I was not given an updated document. He basically refused to update the city's own roster of its own police officers. It told me that he was a lieutenant. It's outdated. When will the city update this and give me an updated document?
Captain Miller, can you supply him with a new updated document, please? I request that he give me an updated document.
I have a large list of stuff, but if I say so, I'll put it on file in like eight hours.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll have that for you in the next couple of weeks, sir.
Thank you kindly, I'm looking forward to it. The next item is also a very troubling problem with the police spreading misinformation. Can somebody tell me what house the unfortunate stabbing occurred in this past weekend on Sidecar Street?
Captain Miller?
I definitely don't release the exact house number. There's a lot of people who want to walk and go there, intimidate witnesses or victims who may or may not be there, or suspects that's still in there. So I usually give a street that the house is on, and that's what I'm gonna release.
Okay. I'm not gonna release the house number.
Okay, I have information that this was actually not a house, that this incident happened in an apartment building. And I'd like the captain to confirm that that's the case. Did this happen in an apartment building or a house?
Can you confirm, Captain, whether it was an apartment building or a house?
I'll confirm that there was, the incident occurred at an apartment in a building. If it's a house or apartment building, irrelevant to me.
Okay, well, I would suggest that it is relevant, I would suggest that the council take a look at the press release Captain Miller released to the media, because I suggested it was misleading. And I don't want to necessarily suggest that it was willfully misleading, but I have concerns, because surely you know that that apartment building on Sidecar Street, 66 Sidecar Street, is managed by construction management associates, they're donors to all of your campaigns, the police director has a blood relative who works for that company, and I'm very concerned that the city might be writing press releases in a way to make it look like crimes happen in private, you know, homes, what we would think of as a one-family or two-family home, when really they're happening in these new apartment buildings. And I don't want to see that mistake happen again. It's happened at least once before, where Captain Miller's press releases have referred to these things that no one in their right mind would refer to as a house, as a haps. This is a four-story apartment building with, I believe, more than thirty units, and if you read the press release, you cannot think that the, with that information, that the proper information is being shared. I understand Captain Miller doesn't want to reveal where somebody lives, but when you reveal that something happened in a thirty-plus unit apartment building, you're not revealing that. You're not, I'm not asking to reveal the unit, and I do have a couple more items to ask about.
Mr. Cradville, extensive polling week, I will let you speak.
Thank you, I'm glad.
Let me just get this right, please. Do you rather have the press release say that it was an apartment building on Sidecar Street, or a dwelling on Sidecar Street? Why can't you just say the word dwelling? Why does it have to be specific?
That would have been acceptable, but he said something that was misleading.
I don't think that nobody wants to be misleading, but I'll let Captain Miller be able to respond.
I respect Mr. Cradville's opinion. I had no way he tried to mislead anyone. It's a home, people live there. And I understand what he's trying, the point he's trying to make, and I hear what he's saying, but I disagree with his opinion. Thank you. I'd ask if you're not used to the word "house" to describe apartment building in the future. And this could have been avoided if Captain Miller had answered my questions, which I do copy you guys on. The last two things I want to ask about, I want to ask about the city's tavern report, is that coming out next month?
Mr. Shammy?
Ironically, I met with Officer DeGrau yesterday, and he is in the process of finalizing his tavern report. We hope to have it out by the end of April, early May, the latest.
Being worked on, and hope to have it out in the very, very near future, sir.
Terrific. I reviewed the 2014 tavern report, and I would just like to ask, there were, I guess, six or seven establishments that were, you know, the focus of that report. Can you tell me what criteria is used to select which establishments get the focus?
Mr. Shammy?
I don't prepare the report, I read the report, it's directed to myself and the council, but I will tell you that based upon my experience, those particular licensed establishments that have special conditions are always mentioned in the reports, because they have a higher sense of scrutiny, if you will. And then they look at calls for service with respect to that particular establishment, and they'll determine whether or not the type and the level of the calls for service are serious enough to bring it to the council's attention. But every particular licensed establishment is reviewed in connection with the police department's review.
Thank you. Can you tell me, do you know if it's gonna be the same exact establishments in this year's tavern report, or that hasn't been discussed? Okay, and the last thing I need to ask you about is, I need to ask you if you've seen this document.
Yes.
This is regarding a matter that's going before the Ethics Board tomorrow?
Yes, I've seen this document.
Okay, and did you see it this year or the...
No, the first time I saw this document for me was Monday.
So you had not seen it prior to this week?
I have not.
Okay, can you please ask Mr. Hamilton if he's seen it?
Mr. Shammy?
Can I see the document?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Or Mr. Shammy, yes.
This was the document that was attached to Mr. Shabazz's ethics complaint, if you will, against Mr. Hamilton at the last meeting. Quite frankly, this particular document, as well as Mr. Shabazz's complaints, is being investigated by the administration, and we have not concluded that investigation. So I don't really want the council to discuss this, it was something that was given to the council, attached to Mr. Shabazz's complaint. You've already said that was the first time you saw it, so be it, but I don't really want to, I don't want to pollute, if you will, prejudice that particular investigation that we're conducting, and I don't think it's appropriate that Mr. Hamilton wants questions about it, because he's got allegations against him of unethical conduct, if you will.
Okay. So at the advice of our council, we will not be answering any more questions regarding that document.
Okay, can I know, what is the investigation into? What are you investigating?
Into Mr. Shabazz's complaints that Mr. Hamilton either lied or spoke improperly when this particular document, I assume, was referred to by Mr. Shabazz back in November of 2014.
Okay, and who is leading the investigation?
Well, I'm looking into it, because it's something that happened within the law.
The law department is looking into the investigation.
Okay, and just a little last question, can you confirm the authenticity of that document? Is that authentic?
I never saw this document, quite frankly, Mr. Egan, until it was attached to Mr. Shabazz's complaint, and that's part of the investigation. I don't know exactly how Mr. Shabazz got this particular document, but we're gonna find out.
I don't know either, but could you be my answer, and that was...
The last comment was rather concerning, because that document, as you're probably aware, basically shows that Ms. Gayden, the alleged community liaison, rather than investigating Mr. Shabazz's complaints of police misconduct, investigated Mr. Shabazz, and dug up dirt on him and shared it with the council. That's what that document shows. And now, Mr. Shammy is not saying, "We're gonna get to the bottom of whether Ms. Gayden did that or not," he's saying, "We're gonna find out how Mr. Shabazz found out about it." That's very concerning. Do not investigate the people who bring you complaints, investigate the complaints.
I was gonna say that. He didn't say, he's investigating the whole thing, the circumstances.
Okay, okay.
The whole thing, we're gonna investigate the whole thing, and we'll have answers, hopefully in the next meeting.
We'll pull it to it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Anybody else I could address the council this evening? Anybody else? Seeing the one?
No.
Second? Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar? Councilmember, Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye!
Council President Egan?